There can be people online.
What?
Aloha, everyone. Welcome to the July meeting of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. Before we start this meeting, we have an important announcement from the Neighborhood Commission. There's been a change in procedure that they're still trying to cope with. Dylan, would you like to explain to us what's happening?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dylan Weitzel. I'm the deputy at the Neighborhood Commission office. I received an email at four o'clock today from Office of Information Practices, that's OIP for short, and functionally from the email, it's stating that as listed agenda items, ten, Waikiki Improvement District, Rick Egged, and nine, elected officials and others, based on the email, says that these items do not give adequate notice to allow a member of the public to understand the board's intentions and deciding whether or not to participate. This was, the impetus of this was, they just say a complaint was filed. They don't say any other details on that. But basically, until we can figure out, our office, how to give next best guidance, from the appearance of the email, it would just be, we would suggest maybe considering skipping those agenda items.
What agenda? I'm sorry.
Items nine and ten. Elected officials and Mr. Rick Egged's report.
Does somebody share an opinion to the office and the opinion hasn't made a final decision?
I can't hear you.
So, somebody stated an opinion, and the board, or whatever it's called, hasn't made a final decision, but until then, our elected officials are gagged from saying anything to us. Is that right?
Somebody filed a complaint with the Office of Information Practices, and OIP, the Office of Information Practices, opined that those agenda items may be, if are considered as the current agenda is listed, may be a potential violation if those things are discussed.
And who makes that call? Who makes that final call?
Well, we're not in the position to tell the board what to do, but if a complaint, if the board were to continue on with discussing those things, they may be subject to further violation.
Retroactively, because I understand that that's been going on for 20 years plus.
It's just as much of a bit of a confusion for us right now as well.
I have one more thing. We can do what we want. We just might be in violation of some future ruling.
Yeah, I'm just here to make the awareness.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if it's still on.
On the public, sorry, on the public concern section, when we don't know what people are gonna stay, people sit with their issues here. We can't, like, vote on it. We can't take any action on it, but we can still hear it, and then ask questions, like simple questions, I think is allowed. Is that correct, Stephanie? I know you just did your sunshine. So would that be acceptable, just to not really ask, I don't know, participate with them, but I don't know, actually, to what extent?
I'm not in the position right now at this moment to give guidance on that one way or the other.
Right, right, but the point, just hang on.
Yep.
The point that Sarah made is the point that I was gonna make. I've been on this board for about 20-plus years, and have taken, you know, zillions of sunshine law training. The sunshine law says that you cannot act on an item that's not on the agenda in proper conformance with the sunshine law, but the elected officials are just giving a report. They're here to tell you what they're doing for the district, what passed, whatever. We don't take any action. If during a report, somebody said, "I make a motion that we do this or that," then that would be a violation. There's no question about that. But to sit here and passively listen to a report, there's no way that that could be a sunshine law violation. And so, I mean, I don't know who made the complaint, if it's a board member, if it's a member of the public, and, you know, if they want to remain anonymous, they don't have to say. But if it is somebody on this board, or in the public, that has a concern about, that I wish they would come to us and be open about it, instead of going to OIP. But that aside, I know the chair is a little squeamish about going forward, and at the moment, I don't even hardly see a lot of elected officials, but it seems to me that if they take the time to come to us, one of the main values of this meeting is not just to hear us talk. It's because you have the firemen that are here, the elected officials come. It's an opportunity for the community to interact. So, a comment or an opinion like that is very disruptive. Every board just says elected officials. I'm not sure what else the agenda is supposed to say. It's the elected officials. I mean, that's what, and they're here to talk to us about what they always talk about. So, I personally think there's no, there should be no problem with going ahead and hearing their monthly report, as we always do, and just going about our business. That would be my input.
We have someone online.
Yes, I'm a little confused, since I'm not there in person. Are they trying to stop just Rick Egged's report?
The email that I received from the State Office of Information Practices includes both Mr. Rick's report and the section for all of the elected officials.
So, in other words, we're not gonna hear from Senator Marawaki? Is that what you're saying?
You know, as I said, I'm the messenger.
And I understand that, but as you interpreted, they are.
The way that the email read, I, you know, "I'm not here to tell your board what to do." It's just that, based on their opinion, if someone were to, say, follow it, follow up with a subsequent complaint, then, I mean, that's just what your board would take on.
This is my opinion. The people that are under the section, which is A through E of Section Nine and Section Ten, have taken the time to serve us over the past couple of months, because we have not been in a meeting for two months, and have taken the time to present reports, both written and hopefully oral, and has taken the time to answer questions that have been posted by not only the public, but us. I think it is undignified, uncalled-for, and ridiculous that we don't honor them and listen to their reports.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sarah.
So, I have a question, then, to separate. You just mentioned the WIA. Actually, I've mentioned that before. I have an issue with a private corporation getting time on our calendar every single month, especially when a rivalry company came and spoke, and we're not giving him time to present every month about his events. And also, now, Rick Egged and the WIA is listed as a lobbyist, is registered as a lobbyist. So then again, that's another caveat of having a special interest group giving preferential treatment.
I mean, I know you've been harping about Rick Egged for God knows how long, but that aside, what, the OIP is talking about our elected officials. They're saying Senator Marawaki, Representative Tam, Councilmember Waters, that none of that, that we can't take any of their reports tonight.
At this point in time, Greg, you had something?
Just a quick comment. I think what the concern might be, because I've raised this previously to you also, and I've raised it here at the board meetings, is just the description on the agenda. So, maybe what they're opining on is that for elected officials, it has their names, but it doesn't say to give their monthly status report, or whatever. But for Mr. Egged, and I've shared that concern with Sarah and some others, he is a private association. He's not an elected official. He earns a lot of money through whatever way he gets his money into his association. He is now registered as a lobbyist. He was supposed to register in 2017 and didn't, and then got called out for it. And then, I don't know what he's done all the other years. He didn't register. But that's a concern that doesn't have a description of why he's here. He just comes every month. He shows up. And I am aware that you're on, you know, by association, you're not an official board member, but you're an unofficial official board member of the WIA, as far as in order, or from history, historical purposes. You're listed somehow. So, you are tied in, and you also go and speak at some of these meetings. So, the concern, I think, just as a board that we should have, is any kind of appearance, that he just gets an invitation every month. There's nothing listed of what he's going to give. He gets to give reports. You know, I wasn't able to give reports. Our sub-district vice chairs weren't able to give reports. You didn't even get to give your report multiple months in a row, because others were coming and giving their reports. So, that's the concern I have, and I think it's shared by, I know Sarah, and maybe some others here. I don't know.
I mean, so, it says elected officials, and you're saying, "Oh, it doesn't say they're gonna give their monthly report." But what the heck do you think they're gonna do? I mean, obviously, they're here to give their monthly report. So, I mean, if this whole thing comes down to, there's a few magic words that didn't get included. They didn't say they're gonna give their report, when that's exactly what everybody knows they're here for. That's a sunshine violation?
I don't have a concern with them giving their reports, and I don't understand why that became the issue. But if it is an issue, that it should say they're giving a monthly report, then that's something that's been overlooked for all these years. So, if somebody's giving an opinion of that.
According to Dylan, every other board does it that way as well. So, this complaint that was filed with the commission, with the OIP, is leading them to get into the weeds big time, and is now gonna cause chaos for every neighborhood board on the island. And so, I don't think that's a good result.
Hopefully not chaos, and I think hopefully it just makes it so that the agenda has the proper descriptions for the public. I think, at the end of the day, it's what the public should see, so that they can decide to come to our meetings. So, again, I don't have an issue with the elected officials speaking. I just have a concern with Mr. Egged.
The other thing is, we don't take action on anything that Rick Egged says. Again, it's getting information.
Okay.
Chair, that's exactly what this is about. No action will come of Rick's report, or any of our legislators' report. I fully support continuing with the agenda, if we get to it, as posted. Thank you.
Can we take a vote on whether or not we approve of going on with our agenda or not, Bob?
Is part of the sunshine law, that email is public record, is it not?
Yeah, I believe so.
So, we could find out who sent it, correct?
Um.
The law requires that all emails, the public bodies are public records. So, could you tell us who sent it now, or do we have to put in a formal request?
Well, I'm not from the Office of Information Practices.
Right.
They notified me, and they did not tell me.
Right.
So, if it was a question, I can't answer, but it would be, the best bet would be to ask them. I don't know what their policy.
But that email is public record. It's not like a secret society. It's public record.
Well, yeah, it was from OIP to myself and a few other city government.
Right, thank you.
Chair Finley?
Okay.
Chair Finley?
Yes.
Can we make a motion to hear the elected officials' reports?
I'm sorry, it's not on the agenda. We would need two-thirds, two-thirds? No, I mean, that we can't do it is not on the agenda. I intend to ask Dylan to get his clarification from the Neighborhood Commission as soon as possible.
Yep.
And I would like to proceed with the meeting as agended tonight.
Yep, and as I noted, I'm the messenger. I'm not here to tell the board how to proceed with its own proceedings. Just, I am required to apprise everyone that if a subsequent complaint is filed, then that's why.
Mr. Chair, having listened to the gentleman who spoke, it didn't, it wasn't certain to me that an official complaint had been filed. It sounds like it was more of an inquiry. And if it's a complaint, I want to see the complaint. And I think every member of the board has a right to see the complaint. And until then, I think your suggestion is most appropriate, to move on, as this board has for years and years and years and years. And if somebody doesn't like it, file their complaint, and I don't know.
They can have my black shirt back, okay? Okay, moving on with the agenda. I know we have the fire department here. We do have a little stuff we need to do. Board members, the fire department is here. Would you like to hear their report, so they can get out of their uniforms? Okay, fire department?
I get to follow that opener. That's awesome. Am I on over here? Okay. Well, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Lee Marquez. I'm the captain from ladder seven, here at the station down the street on Kapahulu. I'm just showing up in my, not my formal wear, on account of we just had a call down the street. So, we just threw the truck in reverse and pulled it out front. So, I'm here to bring my report today. That's good with everybody. And these are our statistics for the month of June. For our area in Waikiki, we reported one structure fire. Only no wildland or brush fires, or nuisance fires. Nuisance fires are fires that include rubbish fires that are outside of a structure or a vehicle. No cooking fires, although I just responded to one right down the street, so you can count that there'll be at least one next month. Eleven activated alarm fires. As far as medical emergencies, or things of that nature, we had 196. Motor vehicle collisions involving pedestrians was one. Motor vehicle crashes, three. No mountain rescues, two ocean rescues, and one hazardous materials incident. Now, we're very fortunate that I'm given a monthly fire safety tip, as handed down to me from our Community Relations Office, and let me share that with you. So, this month, our safety tip involves heat safety. It says Hawaii has some of the highest average annual relative humidity in the country, and when it is too humid, our bodies have a harder time cooling down, which can lead to heat-related illness. In the past decade in Hawaii, the average number of hot and humid days have more than doubled due to climate change, and are expected to increase. This is here as a website, www.brazilianohahu.org, where I guess you can get further information or sign up for updates. They have a couple bullet notes here for everyone to take home with you. Number one, keep cool with fans, or AC space, or air-conditioned spaces in the shade. Wear lightweight, loose-fitting clothing. Number two, drink plain water.
Somebody call Kauai, right by me.
Sorry.
Number three, stay out of the sun. Where I head outdoors, take an umbrella. Number three, check on the neighbors at high risk, or heated, check on neighbors at high risk of heat-related illness. And the last, again, is find more resources about heat illnesses, extreme heat, and how to prepare, www.heat.gov. That concludes my portion. Guys, have a great afternoon. Any questions, any questions?
Any questions for the fire department? Kim?
Yes, sir. I'm not trying to give you a hard time here, but the legislature passed a statute that gives the fire department and other first responders the discretion to turn down the sirens. And I don't know, I know where some of the people live here, but where I live, I think all of the medical emergencies that you announced had to have gone right by my place. And I live 33 floors up, and I can hear it as loud as if I were down on the ground, or three blocks away.
Sure.
We've had meetings here where the discussion had to be temporarily interrupted, because some fire truck was going by miles away. And so, just my opinion, which I could be wrong, that discretion has not been used, in my opinion, at all. And if you would take that back and discuss that with your colleagues, because I think it's, you know, it's waking people up at night, and it really, I think, causes more confusion on the road, being a driver myself, than it does me, because I've got no idea where the noise is coming from. You know, I mean, I hear it, but it could be five miles away from me, and it could be just as loud. So, I just would like to ask that you look at that statute and exercise that discretion.
I have read it. I'm familiar with it. I do understand the word. That whole giant statement was the word discretion. So, I do use discretion. I communicate that with my crew when I drive. We have multiple trucks in our area. We can flood Waikiki with trucks between the Kamaki Station, Makali, my station here, the Poa Station, Alolo, Manoa, y'all fly into Waikiki when needed. They all use their own discretion. I do communicate that with my crew, and it is something I have reviewed with them. It's not the first time I've heard this. I also live in a building, so I'm very familiar with what the noise is. So, I mean, I truly understand where it is, and where your concern comes from.
Greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the fire department? Sorry about that. Seeing none, I'll let you guys get back and change to your informal clothing.
Thank you, guys, very much. Hope you have a great night.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have our annual election of officers. I'll turn this over to Vice Chair Erdecheck.
Okay, we have our annual elections. Are there any nominations for Chair of the Neighborhood Board?
I would like to nominate Chair Finley, and I would like to second that nomination.
Is that you, Catherine? Okay, a nomination. Anybody second?
I second.
Okay. Any other nominations? What? You nominate Bob Finley also? Okay, great. Okay. Well, Bob Finley's been nominated twice, which I think is well-deserved. And is there anybody else, any other nominations?
Call for the vote.
Yeah?
Call for the vote. I call for the vote.
Oh. You're asking the call for the vote?
Yes, sir. Yes, that is correct.
Bealer, okay, there we go. So, I'm so sorry. I was gonna nominate, actually, Vice Chair Lou. I would like to nominate you for chair.
Thank you. I'm flattered, but thank you, no. If the members of the board see fit, I'm happy to stay as vice chair, but I am in strong support of Chair Finley. But thank you, but thank you anyway.
Okay, I'll do, when I call your name, please say.
I would like to nominate Sarah Worth for chair.
Huh? You want to nominate Sarah Worth? Okay. Is there a, is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay. Very well. Okay, so we need a roll call.
Discussion? Doesn't that happen first?
Some discussion.
So, I have to... Hello? Okay. So, quite frankly, I don't, I would not, I don't really want to be chair, because I am currently secretary. However, I do have major concerns regarding what is happening. And my two concerns are violations of public's right to speak, and the second one is prioritizing corporations over community issues. Now, I know that Chair Finley and I have a difference of opinion. I think the public comes here to participate, and he thinks the public comes here to listen to reports and gather information and listen to presentations. So, even if it were true that you all come here just to listen to presentations, I don't hear any of you, like, asking, like, "Oh, I wish we had more timeshares. Ooh, we need another hotel."
Excuse me, Sarah, but there was a call for the vote. This is not a time for discussion.
Well, are you making, are you making a campaign speech?
Sorry, no, but I'm actually, I want it to be for, Catherine, Chair Finley, you need to make a ruling, and you need to call for order.
I called for a vote before you started speaking.
Your nomination, I mean, you want to speak on behalf of your nomination?
No, I just, I want to speak on.
If you want to speak on behalf of your nomination, I'll.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you, sir. Okay, if you want to time me, that's fine. So, instead, like, what I hear people talking about all the time is, like, people are concerned about crime, homelessness, noise. And I just want to be very clear on this point. We are, it is a false statement of material fact to say that we, the Waikiki Neighborhood Board, is required to hear presentations from these corporations and corporate development. So, they are required to make presentations. They are required to have a certain number of them. However, having them do it on our dime, because everything here costs money. This, everything here costs money. So, when they come present, it takes time away from the community, it's an issue, and.
Excuse me, this is not a campaign speech. This is a vendetta. Now, would you get off of this and let us vote on our chair?
Point of order.
I have a point of order, Sarah. You interrupted.
Sir, no.
And why you think you can call for anybody, I don't know.
Okay, what's your point?
A right.
What's your point?
My point is, I called for a vote, and she is not.
Catherine, Catherine, her name is in place, nomination. If she wants to speak on behalf.
She said she did not want the position, Lou.
Do you want to speak on behalf of that? That's fine. Right, so why don't we let her, why don't we let her finish? Yes, take one more minute, and then, and then let's finish, and then we'll call, and then we'll have a vote, okay?
Okay. And so, my second concern is regarding violations of the public's right to speak. So, the NCO, that's kind of like our boss, the Neighborhood Commission Office, states that one of the duties of the chairs, the chair shall ensure that the public be provided an opportunity to testify on every agenda item. Now, shall means mandatory, required. It doesn't mean, like, "Oh, you know what? Kind of late on time tonight. I'm not gonna, like, hear everybody." That's not an option. Shall is an absolute. And so, that's actually the reason why I joined this board, because when I was in your seats, I was not allowed to speak at three different meetings, until finally, I just got fed up, and I joined the board. And now, I guess you have to listen to me. But, so, my concern is, is that, just, you know, one thing is we're corrected. However, it's still ongoing. Like, just the other meeting, we had, unfortunately, it was stated, "Oh, you've already talked enough tonight. You know, that's enough." Or, actually, I didn't realize Catherine was on WebEx waiting to be heard, but I did hear, unfortunately, it stated earlier that, "Oh, Catherine's gonna be mad that I didn't let her speak." That's not allowed. We have to let, you have, this whole thing was created to serve you, to serve the public, and we are still part of the public. We still get to be heard for two and a half minutes, which I'm almost done. But the problem is that I asked to get these things corrected, since I first stayed on this board, and they still are not corrected. So, that's my concern about why I would be chair if needed.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, I have a right to rebut that, because she brought up my name on something that has nothing to do with this nomination.
Thank you. Let's move on.
Well, wait a minute. I have a right to rebut that.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, are there any other nominations?
Lou, don't do this.
No.
I have a right to rebut what she said about.
Catherine, Catherine, just relax. We're getting, we're, we're getting through this. We're having a fair democratic process. We're allowing everybody to say what they wanna say.
Well, if you don't let me speak, it's not fair, is it?
And now, and now, we're gonna, and now, if there are no other nominations, then we're gonna call for the vote. Okay? So, the answer, do we need a roll call?
Okay, um, when I call your name, please say either Finley or Sarah or the Chair position. Okay? Uh, Robert? Michael?
Finley.
Stephanie? Okay. Uh, Louis?
I'm Finley.
Uh, Robert? Oh. Uh, Catherine?
Chair Finley.
Uh, Daniel?
Chair Finley.
Uh, Greg?
Sarah.
Uh, Howard? Oh, sorry. Uh, Chad? And Sarah. Yep. Okay, that's. That's ten votes for Finley, three votes for Sarah. Chair Finley is the, still the Chair.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Sarah, for running the. Uh, next on our agenda is Vice Chair. I believe, uh, we had a nomination earlier for Lou Erdichek, or I'll make one.
I some of.
Is there a second for Lou?
Second.
Ken? Any further nominations for Vice Chair?
Call for the vote.
Seeing none, nominations are closed. Please take a roll call vote.
Okay, when I call your name, please say, uh, Louis for Vice Chair. Okay, Jillian? Okay. Uh, Robert? Michael?
Louis.
Okay, Lisa? Stephanie? Okay, nevermind. Uh, Robert? Okay, uh, Catherine?
Abstain.
Okay. Uh, Daniel? Greg?
Louis.
Chad? And Sarah. Okay, it's.
Okay. Next, thank, congratulations, Lou. Another year of. This board voted years ago to have three Vice Chairs, one per sub-district. Uh, Jeff Mers, who normally does Sub-District One, cannot be with us tonight. Uh, are there any other nominations for Sub-District One Vice Chair?
I second Jeff's nomination.
Okay. So, nomination is for Jeff Mers, Sub-District One.
I'm so, I'm so sorry to interject, I have a question, point of inquiry. Um, I'm sorry, I thought the person had to be physically present or on WebEx. Is he on WebEx? So, unfortunately, I'm not to be a stickler, but I just got nailed for this by OIP.
Sure.
So. I mean, not that I can hold up for next meeting, right?
So, are there any other nominations, or should we move this to the next meeting?
Move it to the next meeting, Bob.
Anybody opposed to moving it to the next meeting? See none. Sub-District Two, Vice Chair?
I nominate Jillian Anderson.
I second that. I was gonna nominate her, but I didn't get to it fast enough.
Any other nominations for Sub-District Two? Okay. Uh, I realize taking a roll call vote is time-consuming, but it's in the plan, so we have to do it.
Uh, when I say your name, please say Jillian and, and Jillian for filling in, uh, electing for Sub-District Two Chair. Okay, Robert? Oh, Jillian? Oh, Robert, boy, that.
Can't we just do by acclamation? There's nobody else running.
We had a complaint one year because we didn't take a roll call vote.
Well, well, what's interesting is no one votes into the microphone, so the people watching online and the people on TV would never hear how the board members vote anyway. So, let's just do acclamation here, since there's no opposition.
Is there any opposition to Jillian? Seeing none. Okay, Sub-District Three, Catherine has been holding that position for a long time. Any other nominations for Sub-District Three?
I'll nominate Catherine.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations for Sub-District Three? Seeing none. By unanimous consent, we will go on and say Catherine is Sub-District Three.
Thank you very much.
I would like to abstain.
Oh, okay. So, we have two abstentions. Any other abstentions or no's?
Once again, thank you.
So, Catherine? Okay. Nominations for Secretary?
I nominate Sarah Worth.
Any second?
Anyone else, huh? Wanna be second?
I nominate Lisa. I nominate Lisa.
Yes, I'll second Lisa. Is that what Catherine said?
I apologize. I will have to decline that nomination. Yeah. This is not, not the season for that. Sarah, you seem to be fitting in greatly and doing a good job.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
So, Secretary Lisa?
No. I, that's so sweet. You guys are putting me on the spot. I'm gonna decline that this year. Uh, next year, maybe different, but for this year, I think we're gonna, um, move forward with our first nomination of Sarah.
Is that, is there anybody else who wants to do it? I mean, I mean, Sarah is, is she, if Sarah's not that excited about doing it, uh, I'm, and don't get me wrong, I'm not, I'm not saying I wanna vote against Sarah or anything like that, but if Sarah, but if Sarah's, I mean, I will say, uh, and I respect a lot of the comments that Sarah makes about our policy issues. Things were smoother when Lisa was the Secretary, and I, and I, and I don't mind putting that out there on the record, but, uh, but I do think it's gotten better, and I think that if you, if you do continue as Secretary, I'm hoping that we can continue to try to smooth that out. The other thing is, we could put this off until next month, and then, uh, I, I understand there may be other people on the board that are not present, who might have an interest in it, and so, if Sarah is reluctant in some ways, then maybe we should, uh, just, since, since we've gotta vote on Jeff, on the Sub-One next month, uh, Melissa might have an interest. There are other people who are off island, uh, who perhaps might wanna do it. And so, you know, I think we might wanna consider either abstaining or bumping this thing over till, till August. That would be, that would be my suggestion.
Chair, I don't believe that Melissa will take that position, because she just was elected Mrs. Hawaii, and she has, um, a number of new responsibilities.
Okay. So, Sarah, you had a comment?
Sorry, the mic keeps turning off. So, I just wanna be very clear in this. Lou and I discussed this before about how there were a lot of violations when I first came on. You know, people get comfortable, you know, and then we, but we were a fresh batch of people coming on. We'd just seen the sunshine videos. We just got our training. So, I was just tightening things up, and it's gotten smoother, because people are now following the rules. So, that was what it was. So, um, I just wanted to, I don't know, I guess not, not to, like, numb myself, but just to, like, defend myself a little bit.
May we vote on this position?
I just wanna, um, I, I just wanna make a quick comment. I think Sarah's been doing a very good job. There's the devil in the details, as we can see from, you know, the, the beginning of this meeting, where there's issues that clearly it's been going on for years, where nobody's recognized there's an issue that's actually appears to be a violation from an attorney at OIP. So, these are things that need to be addressed. You know, we, we now, I think, are gonna get a Fire Marshal for the state. We're the only state that didn't have a Fire Marshal, and sadly, we know some of the results of that. Let's just have somebody that cares about doing things the right way, so this board and this, uh, the board system can be improved. I think that's what we hope for. We've got a, we've got an, excuse me, I'm speaking. We've got a nomination, we've got a second. I think we just need to take a vote, and I don't think there should be any further discussion unless somebody wants to, um, just nominate someone else. But I don't think some, somebody should degrade somebody that is being nominated. Thank you.
Uh, Daniel, would you be interested to be in the Secretary?
No.
You, you were shaking your head, so I, I thought you might be interested.
I think I'm technically Treasurer, and I'll stick with that job.
Call for the vote.
So, there is one nomination. Am I, am I correct? I, I couldn't tell with all the discussion.
If we can delay the vote until August, I do know that Melissa has an interest in actually serving in that capacity. I did email her, and she did express an interest. Unfortunately, she's in Egypt, so she's not able to be here right now.
Is the board okay with that? Sarah's got her thumb up, so we will defer this until next month. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Next on the agenda.
If I could, Chair, we have one position that was not voted. I think the Treasurer's considered an officer position too, right?
There is no longer a Treasurer.
Okay, so.
That, that has been.
So, that's clear. Okay, that's on the record. Thank you.
Just wanna clarify, while the Treasurer's position doesn't really have a current purpose, as the way it is written in our plan, it still is something that needs to be elected until we can actually rectify that, uh, back. So, I would still encourage you to elect one, if anything, just for the chain of command, if the Chair, then the Vice Chair, and whoever can't be at a meeting.
Once again, we have not got that on the agenda, so I'll add that to the next month's agenda, so that we can move on. Moving, meeting date, time, place, rules of speaking, uh, the city, the department. The Neighborhood Commission Office has a contract with this facility. Our meeting times, according to the contract, are between 6:00 PM and 8:30 PM, giving us twenty minutes to clear up the room and leave. Uh, the only other option is the Alawaye Golf Course, which has the same hours. Every time we've met there, they've told us that that, those are the hours. So, Sarah, you have your hand up. Is there another place that you'd like to meet?
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I'm very tech-challenged. Uh, I appreciate the patience. So, actually, um, it's incorrect, because the Diamond Head Borg meets at the Alawaye Golf Course, and they stay till nine, because I just looked at their, um, minutes, and it went to 9:00 PM. Right now, we have not finished a single agenda since months. So, and, so, I would actually like to nominate that we go to the Alawaye Golf Course, because then we could go from six to nine and actually finish these agendas.
Any other suggestions? Do we have to do a roll call vote on that? There has been no coordination to meet at the Alawaye Golf Course by the Neighborhood
Yeah, as, uh, Chair Finley said, we haven't, that's, this is the first time we've heard of that. Doesn't mean that your board, if you wanted to, you could decide that. At the end of the day, the decisions that you make for these types of logistics are subject to our office's support. So, if you make that motion, and someone seconds, and you vote on it, we'll take it into consideration, but it doesn't mean that we could necessarily make it happen. It really just depends. But, you know, first and foremost, we can bridge that gap if the board supports that change. We can cross that bridge when we get there.
First of all, this is right in the heart of Waikiki, which is, which is the community we're supposed to represent. The Alawaye Clubhouse is very inconvenient, and, and simply for an extra half hour, I would suggest that if some members talked a little bit less, we might actually be able to finish our meeting.
Indeed, that's exactly, yeah.
So, we have two options, meeting here, through the contract with the city, or asking the city to find out if we can meet at the Alawaye Golf Course. Any other recommendations? You've had one.
Point of inquiry. So, I'm sorry, sir. Is it possible to defer this till, um, next meeting? Because then we can ask the city if it's even a possibility. Like, why vote on something if the Alawaye's not a possibility?
We have to have a meeting place for the next meeting. So, just like for the election, I'll take a roll call vote here or Alawaye. Does anybody object to meeting here besides Sarah?
Sorry, I'm kinda confused. So, what, this is motion bound? Are we, new location, or are we just?
We, we are spending a lot of time talking about something, so I wanna vote, where do you wanna meet? Either here or Alawaye Golf Course.
The, on the agenda, it was listed, time, date, location. I suggest one person here make a motion, or if you wanna say, keep it the same as what it currently is, if that's what you wanna do, have someone second. Okay. Or if someone then wants to say Alawaye, or you could vote no on this motion.
We have a motion, keep it the same, and a second.
Second. Second, 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 second.
I second it. You guys are not paying attention behind you.
By a show of hands, all in favor of keeping it the same? All opposed to?
I'll keep it at the same.
All in favor of keeping it the same? I'm sorry. And, okay. Any opposed?
Okay, we keep that same location.
Motion passes. Okay, last year, we discussed a lot about whether it be a two-minute speaking time from the audience or a two and a half. I prefer the two minutes, it's easier to keep track of. Every year, we have been traditionally taking a recess in December, uh, mostly because of low turnout in past years, and to allow all the board members an opportunity to plan their season. So, I would like a motion to recess in December. Anybody?
Second.
Is there, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none. Show of hands. Seeing none. Show of hands in favor of recessing in December?
Wait, who moved?
Opposed?
Uh, we plan recess in December twenty twenty-four. Yes. Oh, who, wait, who moved and who's second? So Michael Brown, you second?
None.
I thought we had already moved and seconded. So, so I'm confused what, what, what I needed to respond to.
Yeah, there was a motion and a second. I forgot who the second was.
Okay, Ken.
Chair, if I could, I just want to clarify, or, or Anson, did we, did you capture that right or are we going to redo that?
Can we repeat that, please?
And, and the other, did you capture that vote correct or are we going to redo? Okay. And then the other thing is Chair Finley started talking about the two minutes versus two and a half and then we segue to.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
He called my attention to that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so can you guys, so who says, uh, no? Or, or not recessing in December?
Can you state it clearly so everybody can hear you and it's clear?
Oh, sorry. Um, so for December twenty twenty-four, who did said no for? Okay, Stephanie in, great. And Sarah? Okay. Okay, still passes.
Are we done? Next is how long a speaker can speak from the audience basically on citizens' concerns or agenda items. Uh, currently it is two and a half minutes. My preference is two minutes. It's easier to keep track of. Uh, I would take a motion from anybody, what we prefer.
So point of inquiry, just to clarify on that motion, sir?
I'm sorry.
Could I have a clarification? I didn't quite hear. Did you say that this is a timeline only for the public when they speak or is it for board members also? Does this apply to all speakers?
Primarily it is for our people speaking from the audience.
So it's, it's a timeline only on the audience?
Yeah, we, we expect our board members to have discipline on that. Sort of. So is there a motion in favor of two minutes?
I'll move in favor of two minutes.
Is there a second? If not, I'll make a second. Lou seconds it. Any further discussion?
I would like to motion for two and a half minutes because I think it's important the public have the additional time.
And I'd like to motion for two minutes for members and two and a half for the public, since that's what we're here for.
Good, so.
Sorry, Chair.
Okay. So. You have the vote.
Chair, there's a motion on the table. So it sounds like the first amendment was a two and a half minutes made by Greg. Is there a second to that?
No, I think there was a motion for a two minute, then we have another motion. Yeah, so I don't know if we're going to hybrid the motions or do one at a time, so.
Much cleaner one at a time. The motion on the floor is two minutes. You made a motion to amend that to two and a half.
Two and a half minutes, correct.
Is there a second to that? Okay, okay, you can vote on the two and a half first.
Is there a way to split it up so that we mandate two minutes for board members?
Well, that's a second amendment, so let's resolve Greg's amendment first.
Uh, sorry.
That'll, that'll come after Greg's.
Right, and then we can vote on the, um, the board separately. I think it's fine just to do the board's time separately. I think that works. We just do the public first.
Well, but, well, the motion on the floor right now is just for the public for two minutes.
Yeah, exactly. And then we'll do the board and we can decide what we want to do for the board. And I agree with maybe that, what you just said, so that's good.
So do you want to take up your amendment for the two and a half minutes first?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, who's, who seconded that? Sarah seconded, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor of the amendment? Show of hands. That, the amendment goes to two and a half minutes instead of two.
For the public, okay.
I'm sorry.
She said for the public.
For public, right.
It is now.
Sure. Any opposed? I have one, two. Fine, motion passes. Motion is amended. Second Amendment.
Second Amendment is two minutes for board members on the heels of two and a half for the public. It gives us an opportunity to be disciplined and only stick with two minutes for all comments from the board members.
So there's a motion, amendment is two and a half, or, I'm sorry.
So two and a half for the public?
Yeah.
Two for board members, two minutes for board members.
Okay. All in favor of the Second Amendment? Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, fine. Okay, we solve that. Uh, okay, the day before I submitted this, Member Worth sent me some requests, presentation of time limits, uh, for presentations, uh, currently my policy with all presenter is ten minutes for a presentation. Yeah. Quit turning off the button.
To touch it, sorry. Um, I keep wanting to touch buttons, I guess. So my issue is that that's not what's happening because in the neighborhood plan, if we, we actually need a vote at the board, like the chair can't unanimously decide what the time limits are going to be. It's a board decision and afterwards, if a presentation wants to go over whatever time limit we decide the presentation is going to be, at the beginning of the meeting, we as a board vote whether or not to give that presentation more time. Cause we've had presentations that were over thirty minutes. So we really need to bring that in.
A presentation is a two-part event. I normally ask the presenter to limit the presentation to ten minutes. And then the board, questions and answers, I cannot set a time on that because everyone asks questions. And before we can vote on anything, we must, by the neighborhood plan, allow everyone who wants to testify the opportunity to testify.
Uh, point of clarification.
Just a second. So I don't see why we have to have anything on this. Go ahead.
Just point of clarification, sir. Um, yes, I'm talking about how long the people talk when they're showing their slides, when they're showing their, you know, PowerPoints. That's the presentation I'm talking about. The question and answer, of course, we don't know how long it's going to take. And of course, from now on, we're going to listen to everybody. So, but we are, we are supposed to vote on a time limit, just like we're supposed to vote on the time limit for how long the public can speak. All of these things are actually supposed to be voted on. I know perhaps the board hasn't done this in the past, but where's Dylan? Let's find out.
When you asked them to kill the times I had on the agenda, it eliminated that ability for us to do that. I don't see any reason to add this.
It's required. I don't.
Is there a motion on the floor to, to limit the time?
Yep, ten minutes.
Ten minutes. Is there a second?
I, I seconded and yeah, other boards do it and they have a certain time limit that they set.
Listen, to me, this whole discussion is getting a little silly. Is it two minutes, a two and a half minutes, a ten minutes? How many times can you speak? I think that, you know, maybe it should, it should probably be like the soccer matches where the referee can give you an extra five minutes if they want to. I mean, I, I think you have to have some common sense and discretion based on the presentation. I don't think you need to write such formalistic rules. I think you've got a chair with a lot of experience. Honestly, Sarah, I think this is just getting overboard in terms of overly regulatory detail that, so I'm going to vote against it.
Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick comment. Um, so other boards set their times. It's important to set times. You know, Robert's rules also establishes that there should be some, some democracy of, of, of time limits. Everybody should get a fair shake when, when they speak. That's why we're giving the public a little bit more than we even will get. And it's very important to set those time limits. It's not fair when somebody comes up and they get twenty minutes and somebody comes up and they get five. I was actually cut off at two minutes and seventeen seconds on what should have been a presentation where I should have had much more time. So it's important to set the.
On a presentation where there is no vote, we can do that. On a presentation where there is a vote, by rule, we must allow everyone the opportunity to speak on it.
Correct.
There have been boards that have had major complaints filed against them for cutting off discussion.
We're only talking about the presentation time, the presenters presenting, not the public or other people interjecting. That's going to be the time limit set by the other times, the time limits that we've just set. So ten minutes for the presentation, two and a half minutes for the public. They all get to speak, um, and we get to speak, uh, usually two times. If it's a vote, I think we each have a second bite at the apple, two minutes each.
I forgot.
So that's the way it should be.
Is that a motion? That is a motion. Any further discussion?
I just want, yeah, I'd like to motion for formalize. I'm just basically formalizing Chair Finley, your time limit.
I agree with Lou, using Chair Finley's discretion of the last twenty-plus years has served us very well. Up until recently, when people take Liberty's members to speak at nauseam. Um, so I think we have a good plan. We have a good system now.
Ken?
I guess I want to speak to, uh, point of procedure. I want to speak to a point of procedure. If any board member wants to speak, they should raise their hand and Chair Finley should call on them. And then their time starts, rather than them just saying point of order or objection or stating in like, I've got Robert's Rules of Order right here. And I don't see any, you know, there was a member who just talked about certain thing in, in, in Roberts. It's, it's not in the index anywhere. So, uh, but point being is wait till the chair calls on you to speak and then your time limit begins.
Okay, thank you. Catherine, you're waving your hat.
Chair, we had this discussion a year and a half ago. Originally, our time was two minutes. When new board members came on board, they wanted it to be three minutes, so we compromised and we made it two minutes. I have been raising my hand because I can't get Anson, Anson's attention to let him know that I'm trying to speak. I'm not trying to be rude. I just would like a chance to speak and I have not had that chance tonight. I've had to interrupt and I apologize to the board. It is not my intention to be rude to you. So I don't understand why we're raking this over the coals when we've already had this discussion. Um, I believe Lisa was the secretary at the time. No, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. Sarah was the secretary. And it was brought up by the members that we move it to three minutes. Why don't we just leave well enough alone and go on with this meeting? The only reason we don't get done in a meeting time is because of all this folding roll.
Okay. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, Chair.
We have a motion on the floor. So by roll call vote, those in favor of the motion and the motion is?
Ten minutes for presentation time limits.
Fine. So I'll start the roll call vote with me. No?
Okay, um, when I call your name, please say yes, no, abstain. Gillian Anderson. Robert Boy that. Michael Brown. Lisa Carbonaro. Stephanie Easley. Okay. Louis. Uh, Robert said no. Uh, Catherine?
I say no, and I, I have to ask you, the board members, please speak into the microphone. I don't know who's voting yes or no.
Oh, okay, sorry. Can you guys, can you guys please speak into your microphone, please?
We will.
Okay, but Catherine, do you vote for yes or no?
No.
Okay. Daniel?
Yes.
Ken?
Ken votes no.
Yes, honey. Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, Greg?
Yes.
Uh, Chad?
No.
And Sarah?
Yes, please. Yes.
Okay, that's four yes. Eight no, uh, one abstain. It does, is not adopted. It's not adopted.
I would like to move on to following Ken's discussion on Robert Sewell supporter. Limiting this, uh, the maximum number of times the public or a board member may speak during an agenda item's discussion. Uh, I believe that is in Roberts that each board member may speak once until each board member has had the opportunity to speak before a board member may speak a second time. And I'll defer to Roberts. Is that a correct statement, Ken? Okay, so that item is already covered in Roberts. So basically, on an agenda item, you may ask a question.
The public, sir?
Or the, you, you referred to both the board and the agenda and then the, and the.
I just want to make sure, I, I'm, I'm taking notes, sir. I'm just trying to make sure I heard correctly that we're saying that, um, yes, the, the board gets to speak once, you know, once, and everyone speaks and then, but that applies to the public too. I want to make sure the public gets, are you saying the public gets two bites of the apple too, right?
Right, exactly. An audience member may speak once before they get, before we, uh, continue on. Is that correct according to Roberts? I believe so. Uh, you also asked that a board member, a cumulative discussion time limit per the agenda item. Uh, I don't know how we do that unless we have a scoreboard that says how many minutes you speak on something. So how would you do that?
So to clarify this issue, as Ken actually stated earlier, this issue would be solved if, and I'm guilty of this too, I'm not saying, um, I'm, but like when you, uh, raise your hand, you have to wait for Chair Finley to call you. And Chair Finley, it would really help if you verbalized. Cause when you make eye contact, it gets a little confusing from a distance. So if you could please say the person's name, that would be very helpful. And so I just want to make sure that it's very clear because in Roberts rules, you're right, um, everyone speaks once. And if, and if you want to respond to what other people said, you, you have to wait. You can't immediately respond to that person. So I just want to clarify that.
Yes. I believe it is correct that a person may speak only once until everyone has had the chance. And that we don't need to define, decide here because it's already in the rules of speaking. So. Uh, it's seven fifteen. We're never going to finish the meeting at this rate, but we'll move on to, is Board of Order supply still here? Is, is Police Department there? We'll go a little out of order. You, you've been waiting here for a while.
All right. Good evening, Dominic Diaz. On a little Board of Order supply, I'll make this quick. Uh, June seventh, we had one main break, uh, right out here on Alawaye Boulevard. I know after I spoke, somebody came up to me asking about the repairs. I guess the street light post in the vicinity was damaged. Uh, the break was, uh, occurred because of a car accident. I guess a car ran off the side of road, knocked over a hydrant subsequently. Subsequently also knocked over a light post. So our crews did come out and repair the hydrant and the main. Um, at the time I took some pictures. I'm not sure. I'll go out after the meeting and check the light posts. But my understanding is the Department of Facility Maintenance would be repairing the light fixtures. So I'm not sure the status on that. Uh, no construction in Waikiki for border water. Just a general announcement. Saturday, August third, we're having our, uh, zero escape garden event at our Halava Zero Escape Garden. That is ninety-nine, twelve sixty-eight Eva industry in Halava Industrial. Uh, there's a bunch of booths, educational, uh, opportunities, rain barrel workshops, uh, drought tolerant plants, uh, succulents and uh, plant maintenance based around water conservation, which is always our message. So that said, I'm happy to take any questions on behalf of the border water at this time.
Questions for Board of Water Supply? Don't see any anybody online asking a question.
We got a question over here.
Where? Oh.
Oh, it's a.
Yes.
Okay, um, I did see something that I read in the news regarding a desalination plant that's going to be up and running at some point.
Yeah, fingers crossed. Uh, we are, we are in the early planning permitting stages of a desalination facility out in Campbell Industrial Park. So, uh, you know, if everything goes as planned and as we hope, the tentative schedule looks, you know, around twenty twenty-seven to be in production. It's a one point seven million gallon a day, uh, desalination facility. It's expandable up to five million gallons a day depending on the process, process success and, uh, you know, all the pilot testing and seeing how everything goes. But yeah, our hopes are, uh, that we can diversify our water system, get away from relying strictly on, you know, groundwater and our aquifers. We all know that it's getting hotter. It's raining less, you know. Drought is a real potential forecast for the future. So diversifying water systems, uh, expanding conservation efforts. We also run the recycled water facility out in Eva. Not sure if you're familiar, but that's, uh, up to twelve million gallons a day of recycled, uh, water that we get from the wastewater treatment plant out there. And we utilize that for irrigating golf courses, uh, planter strips along the roads and highways, non potable uses. So desalination is another opportunity to add an alternative water source. So we're very hopeful and, uh, going to give every effort into making this thing happen. So.
Thank you very much. That was an excellent summary. Thank you.
Anything else for Board of Water Supply? Yes, sir.
Michael Brown here. Just one quick question. I noticed that irrigation has almost been turned off along the Alawai Boulevard Parkway where the walkway is in there. And then down the center median strip of Cohio Avenue. And I don't know if that's Board of Water Supply or if that's with parks or the city. But I encourage efforts to save water, but it's noticeably dry now. First time I've ever noticed that.
Yeah, so that that's not under our prevalence of, you know, the water. We provide the water. I'm not sure which agency manages the those irrigation systems. So I know there's usually a city representative, uh, at these meetings. So you can ask them and they can figure that out. I'll, I'll also try and figure it out. And if you don't find out by the next meeting, remind me and I'll let you know.
Anything else for Board of Water Supply? Well, put your hand up. I thought you had a question. Got me pretty young. Thank you, Derek.
All right, thank you.
And do we have HPD online? We've lost contact with HPD. If they come back later, let me know. Citizens' concerns, if you're here. Oh, I am terribly sorry. I took my glasses off. Uh, is Kent Yang here? Kent, please. Kent is going to tell us how the city is changing its bus routes to keep us bus riders confused.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. I am Kent. I'm from the Department of Transportation Services here to update you on the latest bus changes, uh, bus route changes. So the first change that these changes will happen on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. The first change will be next flight. So this is the current route for Route twenty and nine S. So what we're essentially doing for the Route twenty is that, um, the Kapilani Park Loop segment will be discontinued and the new terminus will be on Monzarat Avenue by the Kapilani, uh, Bandstand. Uh, we show the next slide, please. So these will be the changes. Um, the blue is a twenty. So instead of going all around Kapilani Park, it will be halved. While as the new nine S will be renumbered to the Route two hundred and it will be coming from Palolo all the way to Kapilani Park to fill that gap. So it will fulfill that role what twenty used to do. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Some, some service areas of the Route two hundred. So it's, it's going to be an updated route. It will be expanded. There will be new, um, stops. If you look at the rider alerts that I put on the table over there, you will see all the new stops and the new service areas. And the span of service, five thirty to eleven P M. And the frequency we expect to be thirty minutes. Okay. And so, um, for eighteen and twenty-four, um, they only pass through Kapula, uh, Kapuhulu, um, right there on the purple for Route twenty-four. This route will be discontinued. We looked at the ridership. We looked at, um, other routes that can fulfill this role. And that is why we're, um, discontinue this redundant route. Um, and then in place of that, you have more service for Route two. Next slide, please. Next slide. So these are some of the alternative routes for Route twenty-four that, um, riders can take. Next slide, please. And so what essentially will happen for the Route twenty-three, this route comes from Alamoana to Waikiki, all the way to Inahaina, uh, stopping at Kahala Mall. It will be cut in half. So Alamoana and Waikiki will no longer be serviced by the Route twenty-three anymore. Um, but you will have more service, as I said before, with the Route two. Next slide, please. So the Route two will be covering a lot of the routes. And then, uh, riders will be able to transfer at Kahala Mall to continue their usual route if they were riding the Route twenty-three. So they'll still be able to go to Sea Life Park, taking the Route twenty-three from Kahala Mall. Uh, next. And there was other routes, um, mainly here that you may look at. And it's also in the rider alert detailing every change. And like I said before, it will be, uh, the Route twenty-three will extend to Inahaina. So whatever the Route twenty-four that was discontinued, the Route twenty-three will have brand new stops and it will be servicing that area in place of the discontinued Route twenty-four. If there's any more questions, um, that is our number and our email, our contact information. We also have it the right alerts that I placed on the table. You may also get it from Ensign. He's emailed and the Chair, Bob Finley. They have all the writer alerts and they have this presentation available for you and the public to view. Other than that, I'm here awaiting your questions.
Kent, I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Last time you made a major route change. We had a one disabled, uh, veteran come in and was concerned that you had moved some bus stops away from crosswalks. Uh, did you follow up on that this time to make sure that the crosswalks still match up with the bus stops?
Right, so, um, I don't have the say of where the bus stops go. Um, a lot of it's depending on the route. Uh, we ideally find spots that's equitable for everyone. So if it's near a crosswalk, that would be ideal. Um, so Hawaii is, as you know, we're limited in inland. So we try our best to accommodate that. All our buses are ADA compliant and we try our best. We have an information hotline that will help anyone that need help finding the stop nearest them. And it's also accessible for them.
So old guys like me should not be concerned.
You are one of our most important writers. The Kapuna community make up a majority of our ridership. So you are our first concern. I notice, I know that changes are always hard at first, but we try our best to accommodate everyone. And, um, we have these notices up and ready. They're going to be placed on every bus stop and on the website and an information hotline. And the drivers themselves will also let frequent riders know of these changes.
Any, any other questions for the bus?
So what?
Yes, sir.
What bus goes from here down to the Gold Coast, like by the Elks Club and the Outrigger Canoe Club? Is there going to be bus service down there?
Uh, what, what club again, sir?
Like, like past the aquarium down by the Outrigger Canoe Club and the Elks Club. Because that's, that's the route that currently sort of swings around the other end of the park. So if you cut it, so there's going to be a different boot number over there?
Yes, so the previous Route twenty would swing by there past the aquarium. So it will be stopping near the Monzarat, near the band instead. So it is walkable to the aquarium, but to go further down, um, you would have to take the nine S or the renamed two hundred.
Okay, so the nine S and the two hundred will go down past the aquarium down.
Yes, that would go there.
Down, down further.
Yes, it will go further, sir.
Any other questions for bus routes? Yes, ma'am. Please use the microphone.
So, um, I use Google Maps when I look for what bus was going to be the best route for me to use. So when does that get updated with the new numbers?
Yes, so as soon as the changes, I said August eighteenth. Um, Google Map is pretty good at staying up to date with our system. We're in sync. So we're anticipating it to be the same day or a few days after. But of course, you know, Google is controlled in California, so it might, there might be some delays. But yeah, we'll work our best. They'll let us know and we'll, we'll forward that information. Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't see anybody online asking. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Items not on a regular agenda for, that you're here to talk to us about? Any citizens' concerns? John, did you have something as usual or no? Tim?
Good evening. I have a suggestion. Next time you guys have house cleaning discussions and stuff, maybe you can come and meet an hour earlier than the time. Been sitting here for an hour and a half listening to this. It's like, reminds me of third grade. You guys just wasted an hour and a half of my life. So enough said. Um, I would just like the board to, uh, kind of push and stay up to date on the road closures on Kaua Kaua, the block parties, the parades. There's been some discussion. I've had discussions with the mayor. I would like the board's input on that. Major Slater of HPD had a terrific suggestion to relieve a lot of the congestion and stuff. Instead of having multiple parades with multiple themes, his suggestion was to have one parade every quarter. And whoever wants to jump in the parade, jumps in the parade. The same with the block parties. You have a block party once every quarter. And whoever wants to party on the block, they all come down and they party on the block and we get our roads back. Especially with the repaving of Kaua Kaua. I'm sure a lot of you got stuck in that mess. I brought it up to the attention of the mayor, the major. There were no police officers directing traffic. The whole thing, it took me one day to go from Koa to Kapuhulu, twenty-five minutes. And there was one police officer leaning against the pole on Palakalani, just sitting there collecting money, doing nothing. So I hope you guys would bring that up in future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Although I will say that the Kaua Kaua paving went a lot quicker than I thought it was going to go on. I think we have about three and a half weeks for, uh, actual paint. And they're moving some of the, uh, water things out of the road. But the actual paving is pretty much done now. And yeah, and the three times I drove it, there were at least a dozen police officers. One was actually helping them work, but yeah, I guess it depended on the day, getting the overtime. John?
Yeah, Bob, Trevor's here from Bid. Um, it's my assessment that the Parks Department cannot either accommodate or wants to handle Cohio Beach to, to make it a world-class beach area. And Bid has proposed that they take that over, not just the trash cans, but everything, the landscaping and maintenance and everything else. I believe that's the way to go. Parks doesn't seem to be into it, for lack of a better term. And that I've seen this now for three years. That should be a world-class destination beach, not bare dirt, pigeon droppings with empty fountains, electrical conduit down the Waikiki wall, trash all over the place, every day, every day, every day. These guys can do it. They've offered to do it. It's going to cost money, but you just defer the money from the city that doesn't want to do it to bid. That's my personal opinion. Maybe we should get behind it.
Trevor, I, if I can ask you for a proposal we could put before the board? We'll put that on the agenda. We have a hand over here? Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, actually, I, I recently spoke with the Hilton because I, I don't know if you've noticed, the Hilton actually has these garbage cans with lids that are buried in the sand. So all you really see is the top and the opening. And I actually called, um, called them and I spoke with their director. And it turns out Hilton actually put those garbage cans in there and they actually the ones who clean it, they're the ones who take care of it, so forth. Because as it is right now, our, like, trying to collect garbage here in Waikiki has become a huge issue, as you know, from, um, past board meetings. So anything we can do to pass that, uh, pass that responsibility on to a, a private company instead of having taxpayers constantly paying for, uh, I would think that'd be a bonus.
So Trevor, if you're, if you could send me something in writing, I can put it on the agenda. And with a good description of what it is after our discussion earlier tonight. Uh, anything else from the residents? Uh, I have a yellow hand over here.
Laura, you can speak.
Yes, hello. Um, hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Um, I just want to make a quick comment on, uh, and I hope Rick Eggit is there also listening because he's a consulting partner. Um, the proposal for a bridge across the Alawai Canal. I want you to all visualize going down Alawai Boulevard and coming, uh, upon, close to Kalimoku Street and feature three long, uh, um, hook and ladder, um, fire trucks stationed all together right at Kalimoku Street. And then think twelve feet up in the air. That is going to be a solid concrete wall or maybe they'll decorate it or something that is for the off ADA off ramp from that bridge. And that really reflects poorly on Waikiki and certainly on all of the locals that are trying to drive through or walk through there. So I would ask you to, maybe Rick Eggit has a chance to weigh in because the memorandum of agreement is still coming forward. And maybe he has something to say if you folks would all, um, weigh in with him and try to think that there's another way to do it. I would just say very simply, it does, the bridge proposal does not need to be twelve and a half feet above of water level. That's only something that was conjured up falsely, uh, that because the, um, Army Corps of Engineers, uh, six or eight foot walls were going along the canal, that it, the bridge would have to be higher to go over the walls. Now you just see, think of all of that concrete that's going on. And I think that's rather major. So I would, um, welcome anybody that has any questions, but, uh, that I think is a real concern on your side of the canal. Uh, there's many other concerns also. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Good. Moving on. Public events. Uh, August third, Hawaii Heart Walk will be done in Kapilani Park. Uh, that will be six. Uh, that will be 6:30 in the morning. Uh, Saturday, August 10th, 2:00 PM to midnight, Kani Kapila Waikiki Festival. Uh, Sunday, August 11th, 5:30 AM to 10:00 AM, Norman Tamahana 15K. It's Kapialani Park to Kahala. Again, it's not in our district, but I thought you'd like to know. And Sunday, August 25th, uh, 9:40 AM to 1:30 PM is the Dick Evans Memorial Bike Race. They're going to be all over the city. So watch out for bicycles on Sunday, August 25th. Applications for liquor license?
I just need to make a quick clarification that, once again, these are not event times, these are road closure times. And if you want more information about the road closure, just go to www8.honolulu.gov backslash DTS backslash 2024 slash events backslash.
I suggest everybody go there constantly. See what's happening. Okay, liquor licenses. Uh, at the meeting on July 1st, Tsunami Supermark 2463 to Kohio is asking for a package sales only. So that's where you buy your bottles, if you go there. July 25th, the Waikiki Ambassador Hotel by Romer is applying for a hotel general license. I have one more, but it came in too late to be on the agenda. It'll be on next month's. Uh, elected officials. Uh, Nola, are you still here? And again, we started off our meeting saying that OIP does not like these presentations. Or something like that.
Thank you, Chair Finley. Good evening, members of the neighborhood board and, and residents. Um, thanks for having me. Yes, I'm, I'm sorry to hear about the OIP report, but maybe, well, we've been doing this for years, but I guess we'll see. I wanted to first cover the mayor's newsletter. I have a lot of outstanding responses from the last month, from two months ago. So first I will cover the mayor's newsletter highlights and, and, um, basically there have been a lot of activities and you can of course go to the mayor's newsletter at nuanawahu.org to find this. But, um, basically there are some interesting things happening. The city is now taking over Kalailoa Grace Park, it's been on the news. Um, and of course, we, we kicked off, um, a project for solar panels at the Blaisdell parking lot. So that's really exciting. And I think it's, you know, really the city trying to conform with our own initiative to, to, um, to really save energy and such. Um, we're celebrating the one-year anniversary of Skyline, the city's rail transit system. And I think it's, it's going pretty well for short stops, but hopefully that'll change and we'll get more ridership. Um, but really interesting thing, I think, for everyone here in Waikiki. Um, so one of the mayor's highest priorities is the affordable housing and the homeless shelters. Because I think that, I think he's made a really, um, big effort since Governor Green has been in office to partner with the state because the state has significant funds, as Senator knows, and, and people in the state. And, and that partnership is really critical. But with that partnership, the, um, the city has opened, um, the Leahy Behavioral and Medical Respiratory Facility, which is right up the street, as you know, in Diamond Head area. And, um, it's basically designed to provide medical services for homeless individuals who aren't suffering from severe enough ailment to be admitted to a hospital emergency room, but require medical intervention. And specifically, it can help treat substance abuse disorders. And North Shore Mental Health, the service provider contracted by the city, will provide certified substance abuse counseling and emergency housing, um, counseling services and, and other help for people with, um, you know, mental and substance abuse issues. And I think with that facility being so close to the Waikiki neighborhood, I think it, um, I think it's a great, um, asset for the neighborhood. So I, I wanted to mention that. Um, so I'll try to go through these pretty quickly, but, um, from two months ago, I think, um, I guess, um, Mark Howard isn't here, but we were asked a couple of months ago about the sidewalk, um, sidewalks in Kapahulu. And HPD reported that they have a new sergeant, they, he just come on board. But basically, DTS has been working with them and, and this is a kind of an update report, which I think is of interest. So DTS, the Department of Transportation Services, completed its investigation into the board request for pedestrian safety concerns on Kapahulu between Kalakaua and Kohio Avenue. And this included site observation, field assessments, a review of the area's traffic collision history. And during their site observation, it was observed that a pedestrian warning sign is missing. In addition, the department is recommending the installation of PED-Xing pavement markings on approach this crosswalk. So the department has issued a work order, um, to the Department of Facility Maintenance for the installation of PED-Xing pavement markings and the replacement of the missing signs. And in addition, they met with HPD District Six Major James Slater and Lieutenant Blake Arida to discuss traffic safety concerns along the Kapahulu corridor. The Complete Streets Division will explore potential enhancements of specific locations to improve pedestrian safety in, in future projects. So that's the update on Kapahulu Avenue. Um, the other, other announcements, okay, a couple of announcements. Summer Fun is still looking for people to work for their summer parks and to, to help young kids, um, have a great summer. And they would like everyone, if they're interested, or if you have any children or friends who are interested, visit bit.ly forward slash summerfunjob. So please, um, help us spread the word because it's a real important program for us. Um, okay, um, another announcement or request is for the board to consider designating a representative to, um, a community, um, I don't know what it's called, a board member, a task force. Basically, um, the city of, um, the city's Department of Facility Maintenance is establishing a potential punch, potentially new stormwater fee. And the Department of Environmental Services, which is, is responsible for the waste, waste management collection and wastewater management, is proposing increases in the city sewerway rates to fund our, their infrastructure and water quality improvements. So they are seeking individuals from the neighborhood boards to participate in and provide feedback in developing this new and increased rate structure. So if anyone is interested in having input on this, perhaps at the next meeting it can be on the agenda. There's a schedule for the meetings.
Could you send that to me, please? Could you send that to me at all? I, I think that would be probably something that Michael Brown or Jeff Mers would have the expertise to, uh, speak logically to it. Just off the top of my head, but it's not on our agenda, so. I'll put it, I'll put it on our agenda, looking for a volunteer.
The, um, the meeting schedule, it's once a month for the next six months.
Yeah. Are you all right?
Okay. Um, there was a question about cracked sidewalks and we don't have response on that this meeting. We will follow up next meeting. The legacy events, I guess this is related to the parade issue. Member Worth asked, who's in charge of approving legacy events? How long do they keep their legacy status? Does the legacy status only last three years? And the answer is from the Department of Transportation Services. Legacy events qualifications for Waikiki Special, Special District are defined in the revised ordinances Honolulu Section 15 dash 24 dot 20. So basically, the legacy parades and activities means any parade or activity that's been held in Waikiki Special District annually for at least 15 consecutive calendar years. And in order to maintain the legacy status, the parade or activity must be held every calendar year after attending legacy status. And failure to hold the parade or activity in each calendar year results in loss of legacy status. So that's how the legacy events get established. Um, crosswalks, like, there was, uh, Member Daniel asked if the walking signals on the Maokaa side of Alaway Boulevard and Kalakaua Avenue towards Diamond Head can have automated crosswalks with longer walking times. And, um, DTS responded that the push buttons allow for, um, efficient pedestrian and traffic flow. They're monitoring the pedestrian crossings at the intersections named and will make adjustments to the pedestrian crossing times if, if, if they feel less necessary. But they also want to remind us that pedestrians should only start to cross the street when the white walkman appears and it's safe to cross. And not when the red hand is displayed. So they, they, they added that in, in their response. Um, complete street updates, there was a request for an update on the complete street project on Kohio Avenue and Alaway Boulevard. So the Complete Streets Plan from DTS for Alaway Boulevard has been revised based on public feedback and can be reviewed on the Waikiki Complete Streets website. The plan's recommended safety features will be incorporated into design of roadway rehabilitation and repaving project. In the meantime, they are developing new signage plan to reduce the speed limit to 25 miles per hour, which was previously proposed and consistent with other roadways in Waikiki. And, um, they have recently advertised the Kohio Avenue project for installation and construction and have awarded the contract and they will provide more details in the coming weeks. So there's progress on that. Um, street parking, a resident asked if it is possible to do an assessment on the streets of New, Pau, Namahana and Kalimoku to see if the roads are safe and a possibility for street parking. Again, this is from DTS. They said they will conduct an investigation, which may require a little bit of time, research, site inspections and analysis. Um, they're saying that street parking is allowed on those streets, but they will, um, look at the possibility of a long street parking on New Street. I guess that's the only street on which parking is not allowed. And they will let us know. Um, Alaway Bridge Suggestions, I, I think, um, this is probably from the same, um, person that maybe has, um, spoken about this, but DTS is saying, and, and I know that I got another question about the bridge, but they say that they're committed to considering alternative designs and configuration for the pedestrian bridge as part of the procurement process. They're using a dump, design-build procurement method, which allows the city to receive and consider alternative configurations and design. Further, they're evaluating smaller bridge designs that might meet the project's purpose and need, based on the feedback. Feral Chicken Report, Member Daniel asked for a report of how many times complaints about feral chickens have been responded to in Waikiki, specifically 2050 Kalakaua Avenue. Also, how many chickens have been collected or removed? And is it possible for the city to have a contract with two or more vendors? And, um, this response is for the Customer Services Department. For our records, we have not received any complaints that are clearly for 2050 Kalakaua Avenue. The vendor is scheduled to assess the area shortly. And the current contract, under the current contracts, and as of May 29th, 1,051 chickens have been captured and/or disposed. They, they are saying that the state's procurement code can probably allow two contractors, but they don't have the funding for an additional contractor. So.
That in Waikiki, the number, 1,000?
1,051, I believe, is for, um, no, I don't think it's just for Waikiki. I think it's islandwide. Because that's kind of a big number for them. Okay, um, Motorized Bikes and Scooters, a resident asked what agency is in charge of motorized vehicles? And what are the current laws for electric bikes and scooters in regards to riding on sidewalks? So the response was from HPD, but actually, um, the department that's in charge of these motorized vehicles is the Department of Customer Services because of course they run the motor vehicle, the, um, and licensing, um, department division for the island. So this falls under them. But there's a couple statutes here cited, I'll just try to excerpt it pretty quickly. But HRS 291C dash 139, um, about electric foot scooters. It is up to the counties by ordinance to regulate operations of electric foot scooters. But this time, there are no revised ordinances of Honolulu regulating the riding of electric foot scooters on sidewalks. And currently, um, let's see, um, currently the following laws regarding bicycles on sidewalks also apply to low-speed electric bicycles. And this is from the revised ordinances of Honolulu. No person shall ride a bicycle, skateboard or roller skate upon any sidewalk in Waikiki. And notwithstanding this subsection B, no person may ride a skateboard or roller skate on any roadway in Waikiki. So I guess that's just for recreation. Then there's another statute, um, section that says no person shall, HRS Section 291C, again, no, no person shall ride a bicycle equipped with motor vehicle on, with motor on any sidewalk. And, um, the counties will have to, by ordinance, um, provide further instruction. So, and then further, the last one is really about just regular bike riding. Section HRS 291C dash 148. A bicycle, um, may be driven under a speed of 10 miles or less on a sidewalk, but no bicycle riding is allowed on sidewalks in business districts. And I believe that includes Waikiki. So the last one, thank you for your patience. Um, the noise complaint, the resident raised concerns of houseless people camping on a patch of lawn between Alaway Golf Course and Waikiki Kapahulu Public Library. And HPD responded, they say that District Seven regularly patrols the area. And between May 30 and June 5th, officers issued aid citations to individuals violating various park rules and criminal littering, and they recovered unregistered bicycles. So they responded that they will continue to patrol the area and take action for violations. So that completes the report. Thank you.
A whole bunch of questions. Uh, one thought. When we talk about push buttons to cross the street, we have a mix of some that work, some that don't work. And it's very confusing, especially to our visitors, who sit there and they push one that doesn't work. And the light comes on and says cross the street. And they don't press one that does work because it's kind of hidden. So I'd like the ones that don't work to be removed. Uh, and signs posted to cross street, press button. Uh, you'll see that along Kohio Avenue quite a bit. The ones on Kalakaua, the buttons will not work because they're the barns walks. So Barnes Walk is where everybody crosses at once. So, uh, which this board supported a few years ago. Uh, so if the buttons don't work, they should be gone. And if they do work, they should be posted, press button. It's, uh, it causes a lot of jaywalking and danger to the people doing that. Sorry to bring that up, but I keep watching people going like that and nothing happens. Okay, uh, Michael, I'll start with you and then go over to Clint here.
This, this goes with, um, Chair Finley's statement there. When you go to California, you'll find every intersection has a, has an up-to-date crosswalk, um, button system that has a light and it has a voice activation too. So all people have access to safety when crossing. And I think it's time for us to get that too. Because our guests here are really important to us as a Waikiki community. And so I don't know the specifics about that, but I notice it all over Los Angeles County, Orange County, San Bernardino. It's really wonderful. Right?
Thank you.
Yeah, I actually agree with, very much with what he said. Some of the buttons are broken, they don't work, they're cracked, they're metal, they're plastic. They don't have the voice activation. Everything's different all around the city. Um, the question I had for you is it, it seems like Bikki, the Bikki bikes, uh, they're being taken over by the city and county. over by the city and county. Someone else may have a comment about that, but my just quick comment is, or concern, is that to me, that's going to open up more liability issues with the city and county. So we're just talking about riding bikes on the sidewalk. Say someone's riding a Bikki bike on the sidewalk and they take out a couple of people and they end up at the hospital and, you know, now if the city and county is fully responsible for that program, they can then go sue the city and you're looking at expanding that program. Are there any thoughts about that or any comments and maybe just in general about this transfer to the city and county?
Well, I think the Bike Share Program is, the city has always supported it, but of course, it's been privately run. So, but they wanted to continue it. And in order to do that, we had to, you know, I know the city had to take it over, but I think that, you know, I'm sure that the corp council has examined it pretty closely and I'm sure that there's a certain amount of, when you pay for the bike, I think there's a certain amount of, you know, liability responsibility on the biker, but then, of course, but then I'm not sure past that exactly what they've taken to ensure that, you know, the city doesn't have, you know, unnecessarily high liability. But of course, we can find out. But I do think there was a question of, you know, really wanting the program to survive and trying to promote bike ridership and.
And the very last thing I just forgot to add, it is running at a loss. It's not financially stable, so it's not a moneymaker, it's a money loser from what I gather. I looked at the financials. I don't, did you want to?
Excuse me, Daniel?
Yeah, thanks, Nola. I wasn't happy with the chicken response because it sounds like there was zero chickens caught by the city since we last saw you. That's what I got from your response. But I'm more upset about the pedestrian lights. Department of Transportation, I think, is obviously more focused on highway Waikiki, getting traffic from one end to the other without being stopped by tourists or jaywalkers, I should say, including myself. Bob Finley said it perfectly right and as well earlier. When someone touches the button, I think you should know how long it's going to be before, acknowledge it, you know how long. And the width of the sidewalks in Waikiki, coupled with the 80% focus on getting traffic through rather than foot traffic around, it's just, it's all accumulates to the fact, it's hard to cross the street anywhere in Waikiki, especially in Sub District 2, which I represent, where if you're on Keoniana Street or anywhere around that area, you've got to walk down to David Kalakaua Park and cross Kuhio, you got to touch one button there. Sometimes it takes a minute and the light change. Other times it just doesn't change and you'll see dozens of people build up at the street and then jaywalk. But then you got to go to Kalakaua and you do the same song and dance there. And if you don't use Kuhio through Kalakaua Park over Kalakaua, then you got to go triple way next to Ohana Marketplace, Waikiki Brew, and then back over to Kihiyo. So maybe if we can make that intersection right there next to Ohana Marketplace and Waikiki Brew, a scatter, whatever they call it, a scramble, that would be helpful.
Where the cross streets again?
It's right where Waikiki Brew is. And so it's Alamoana and Kalakaua. But that would be good to have a scramble there. But really, I would like Chair, encourage Chair Finley as being elected to Chair, knowing you're a pedestrian friendly. I would encourage this board to work with Nola, potentially get the Department of Transportation in here and really use this next year to focus on tipping the scales towards pedestrian-friendly use rather than vehicle traffic. Because right now, I think it's about 80% skewed towards traffic and 20% skewed towards pedestrian. And I think that's like, you know, I could argue more, that it's 90, 95%. You know, I don't know why people have to travel through Waikiki. Use other ways around. This is not a thoroughfare, it should be pedestrian friendly. This board should work with Nola, Department of Transportation, the city, to really focus on pedestrian use. That's what I'll be looking forward to over this next year with Chair Finley again.
Sarah, you had your hands up? Oh, I'm sorry. Stephanie, go ahead.
Thank you for that report. And I'd just like to follow up. I'm interested to know how they figure out how long is appropriate to have the white walk, you know, the signal to walk, because it seems geared fully towards completely able-bodied people. I see people, kupuna, people in wheelchairs, people with other disabilities stuck in the middle of a lane because they're just slower. And so I'm just interested to know how that time is determined. And then I have one other thought, which is in the June 28 civil beat, there was a Community Voice piece about having a litter campaign for Waikiki to educate people about keeping the Waikiki Beach in better shape. It's a resource we all use and I'm interested in any approach to make it cleaner and nicer. I'm a full-time pedestrian, I have an adorable dog. I always walk along the beach and people always stop me to talk about my dog. And over and over, they point out how dirty the beach is and how they didn't think it was going to look like that. So the article just says, you know, simply an education campaign that could be run in conjunction with obviously other approaches to try to work on the trash issue in Waikiki Beach. Okay, thank you.
Just a minute, ma'am. Don't be yet. Sarah, do you have something?
I'm going to save my Bike Share expose for next meeting since we're so behind.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Deborah and I'm a resident here and I just wanted to comment about the crosswalks and the lights. A couple of the crosswalks and lights that I've gone through actually work. However, I almost got ran over because drivers were turning on red. So I was told, somebody actually had to pull me back and say, don't wait or don't go as soon as the walk goes because you might get run over.
The lady with the crutches, you, ma'am?
Okay, so I have a question or a statement more like, because I used to be in an electric wheelchair. And you're saying that you shouldn't enter the crosswalk once it's red. By the time the light turns white and I would turn my electric chair to move it and it takes a second before it starts moving, it would be red every single time before I actually hit the lines of the crosswalk. So I, I think that the timing needs to be extended so that there is enough time to actually get in the crosswalk before it turns red. So.
I'm sorry, we didn't get either one of your names.
I'm Bonnie Fraser, I live in Waikiki, I mean, the other side of Waikiki.
Okay.
I'm Deborah King.
Thank you. Jacob?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Nola, for all of the answers you got, including the requests for evaluating those streets. I look forward to seeing what DTS finds on those. I would like to ask, you know, usually when HPD is here, they give us the brief on the crimes. And since they're not here, I'm hoping you can ask HPD about environmental crimes enforcement here, right? Everyone's brought up the littering, the quality of the beaches, the public parks. You know, I can't tell you how many times I walked down the Alawai Promenade every week and it is just all sorts of garbage everywhere, trash bags ripped open, trash cans everywhere, shopping carts in the Alawai. I feel like I could leave, push a shopping cart into the Alawai on my way home from this and no one would say or do anything about it. So I would like, you know, at the next meeting, let's get some of that HPD here, seeing those environmental enforcement crimes. And then just on infrastructure, real quick, I'm glad that DTS has done the updates for the Complete Streets projects for Kuhio and Alawai Boulevard, but they're taking a really long time to get it done. We got to move, the city's got to move more quickly to get these. And we, Waikiki should be a pedestrian, multimodal, friendly environment that is not car-centric. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Swain. As a trail field resident of Waikiki, I think we should make, make it more pedestrian-friendly. I cannot tell you how many times as I walk sidewalks, I almost get run over by a bicycle or scooter from behind, no warning. So I will think, as we make infrastructure improvements, perhaps we should like, you know, designate, you know, like a bike lane, skateboard, scooter lanes. You know, so, you know, so that way, you know, more people can walk without having to look over so much time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Ruby, you have a quick question?
Yes, this in regards to what you were saying about pedestrian mobility along Alawai Boulevard. The mayor expressed concern about losing a lane of Alawai Boulevard, which is highly likely if this proposed bridge project goes through. The planned drawings show a very squinching, narrowing of the, our historical promenade along the canal with our beautiful view planes. And this would just really take away from the visual delight of Waikiki. And what's left is a pedestrian's very skinny little walkway, probably only barely officially wide enough for a wheelchair. And I think that going back to the drawing board and keeping that promenade open would be beneficial to everybody, pedestrian-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nola. Appreciate everything.
Thank you very much, Chair.
We're running way behind. Tommy Waters, are you here, Chair Waters?
Hello, my, I have this kiola with Chair Waters' office. Good evening, Chair Finley and Neighborhood Board members. Just wanted to start off really quickly, Friday, June 21, Mayor Rick Blangiardi signed the budget bills for the city's fiscal year 2025, Bill 11, Bill 12, and Bill 13 into law. Can you guys hear me?
Questions for?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was just checking if you guys can, can you guys hear me?
I'm sorry, I had a humming in my ear.
Oh, sorry. Can you guys hear? Is it clear? Is it soft? Sorry.
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you so much. Secondly, the Waikiki Business Improvement District Association, we went ahead and, I'm sorry, the Honolulu City Council honored them during the June city council meeting for the Aloha Ambassador Second Chance Program. In addition to that, Chair Waters is looking into feasibility and partnership to install beach lockers in Waikiki with the WBIDA. Let's see, public payphone removals, the Department of Parks and Recreations reports they are working with YMacTel, which owns payphones, to remove them from city parks. With over 100 payphones in city parks, DPR, the Parks and Recreations is anticipating it will take six to 12 months to remove all payphones. On July 2, the city unveiled three of the 26 specialty trashcans along Kuhio Beach Park. These trash bins were donated from JTB Hawaii for $1,000 for 30 trashcans, which will be slowly installed. Let's see, the donation was in celebration of the company's 60 years in Hawaii. Let's see, and rehabilitation of Kahala Avenue repaving was completed on Friday, July 5. The city still needs to reposition the manhole covers, re-strike the roadways, and reprogram traffic lights. This lane, the lane closures will continue to impact traffic in Waikiki for roughly another month or so, but the scheduled roadwork should move along Kalakaua quickly. Waikiki Police Substation is once again fully operational and has reopened for walk-in traffic effective June 26, so you guys should be free to visit that as well. And Private Refuse Collection, it's currently being addressed by the mayor and the managing director. Recently, concerns concerning reports of not enough drivers for West Oahu aggregate has been resulting in collection delays from several days up to two months across Oahu. That's going to be the report from Chair Waters. I can take back any questions.
Yes, go ahead, Sarah. We are.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I kept cutting out back and forth, but I have a quick question for you on the garbage bins. These garbage bins that they donated, which is wonderful that they donated them, are they being like spread out all along the Waikiki beaches? For example, is it going to be, are they going to be spread along Darusie Park or like beach? Or is it just going to be sent?
Thank you so much. It's just going to be along Kuhio Beach Park.
Trevor can answer that question. Trevor can do that.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer, yeah, I was, we were part of, with the donation and whatnot. So it'll be all throughout Kuhio Beach Park. They'll be finished installing them tomorrow and they'll be from the police substation to the Waikiki walls, so within the Kuhio Beach Park.
So I just, my concern again, I must state, is that it's great that they're donating these bins, but then the responsibility goes on to us. And the fact that these bins are only going in front of their hotels, only supporting their economy, I don't think it's fair to pass that cost on to the taxpayers when we have like the Hilton is actually just doing it themselves. They put in the garbage cans, they collect the garbage, you know, every single day. So I don't understand why another private hotel can't, instead of that other private hotel passing the cost on to the taxpayers, why can't they do what the Hilton did?
I'm happy to answer that. So the trashcans that were donated, were donated to the Department of Parks and Rec. And JTB Hawaii is not a hotel, it's a tour company. And what they did was they replaced these green graffitied, broken trashcans that were in the park. They had these wide-open bins. So they took those 30 trashcans out of the park and they just switched them with these brand-new cans that could not litter. Department of Parks and Rec is still servicing the trashcans just like they did the old broken ones. So there's no change of, you know, jurisdiction, there's no change of job, it's just the different trashcan. So, yeah, and that's why it's a private donation and it was donated to the city and county officially through the city council. But yeah, there's kind of no logistical changes to it, it's just the aesthetic is changed. Just a switch out. Yeah, correct.
Thank you, everybody. We're running really late, of course, so I'd like to move on to Senator Maury Walker's And Rick, I'm going to ask you to dedicate your time to the community center. They have their presentation tonight, so. Yeah, we're up kind of against a hard wall here, so. Thank you.
Because we're so late, I have for you a number of bills. Today was the last day the governor had to veto bills. And so there were 262 bills that were passed. And of the 17 originally on the veto list, there are 13 bills plus some items in the budget that got vetoed. But for the most part, all of our bills, I say our bills, but the bills that we're concerned about having to do with crime, having to do with homeless, having to do with mental health and substance abuse services, having to do with condos. And I think, Chad, do you remember when you had the robbery in the building or theft in the building? Now parking lots are considered part of the association's building, so now anything that happens in the pertinent areas, they'll all be part of that project, so just report everything. So that was because of you. The other bill that I want to thank John Deitzman, Tim Gary, for their persistence in terms of these, we call them the habitual offenders. These are the frequent flyers that HPD calls. They have assaulted people in the past. What we have on the books is frequent property thefts or damages. And those, if you have three offenses within a five-year period, it raises from a misdemeanor to a felony, which means you can go to jail for $5,000 of the penalty fines. Uh, we have not had one for people. So this bill is really big time. I'm so pleased. It took a lot to get it through because we don't, you know, we have people, my colleagues, some of my colleagues who feel that we shouldn't put people in jail because, you know, they're not, they don't have homes. But this is, this affects everybody. So the habitual offenders, I don't know, John, for the arrest or convictions, uh, these people, uh, they have three offenses within a five-year period, it is going to be a Class C felony. So please, everybody, report crimes. If you're assaulted, please report it. HPD can only do so much. But once they have the three offenses within the five-year period, and this bill that passed is effective immediately. So if it's a crime that's committed last year within a five-year period, and they commit two more this year, then they will be elevated to a Class C felony. And we've been working with the prosecutor as well, so they will charge. And the courts will then look at this because when the prosecutor brings these cases forward, the court will look at them. So it's really important that this is a community affair. It's not just the police, it's not just the prosecutors, not just the courts, it's all of us. So be sure to report anything and everything and work with your police, uh, department. We have one of the best police districts in this county. I have worked with other commanders and tenants, uh, and officers. And, uh, James Slater was with Traffic Division, was in the chief's office. He's terrific, terrific, and he's doing some really marvelous things and being much more proactive with Lieutenant Arida. Lieutenant Arida and also you, most of you may know, um, Officer Ryan Yamamoto. He is the, uh, community policing officer. And together, it's, it's a really strong team. And I'm so pleased that Waikiki has such a team and they work closely with WBID and WIA. And, and it's really critical that we all work together. This is a community affair. This is not just one group and, and pointing fingers at another group. It's really all of us. I want to make a really big plug because I have not worked with officers as closely as I have this past year, and it's been marvelous. I mean, really, really happy to have that and, and have that representation in Waikiki of all the districts. So I'm making a big plug for that. Now, I have all of these bills and we have no time. So I'm going to just say that, um, they're all listed here, all the bills that pass. Very good bills on all of these items. Traffic safety, pedestrian safety, we're talking about motor scooters, loud noises of vehicles, all of those now the police can inspect. If they're making loud sounds, they can go or you can report, they will go and inspect. And that will be something that could be on a, a, uh, I don't know if it's a conviction, but it's an infraction, so then they can go forward with it. So this is all to say that there are a number of bills that we passed. It's all on enforcement, it's all of us working together, reporting. And, um, it's, it's, um, really incumbent of all of us to look at this as a community. We all have to make ourselves safer by working together. And so I think, um, yeah, and I just want to echo what, what Trevor said, that Waikiki Special Improvement District is a special improvement district, it's a special district. So there are a lot of things that what WIA and WBID are doing that are really critical for the improvement of this community, this special community. So again, um, when we're talking about cleaning up Waikiki Beach, I think that Aloha ambassadors are doing a terrific job. Um, and what we're missing is the entries. I'm going to do a plug for Alawais Smoke Boat Harbor because it is the entry into Waikiki. And if you come across Alawana Park, uh, it's not, it doesn't meet the standards of what WBID is, is doing in Waikiki Beach. So, um, I would like to work more closely on trying to include them into this whole special district oversight by WBID and clean up that whole area so that, that visitors and residents coming into Waikiki can see that all spectrum of, of Waikiki as a destination place for everyone. So, um, with that, that's my report. If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Sharon. With our time limit right now, could I ask you to go by the side and take any questions from, from them? Yeah, it's, we're running way out. Uh, Adrian, do you, do you mind if we defer you till next, next meeting? Would that be all right with you?
Oh, that's fine. I just want to make one plug is that we're having a school supply drive this Thursday at Alaw, uh, Alawai Elementary School and Jefferson Elementary School from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Got your report. It was a great one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Waikiki Community Center, uh, you've been waiting all night. And I may beg a few minutes beyond our 8:30 from you tonight since it's your house. But, uh, please come up and do your presentation.
Thank you. I will try to be very efficient because I know that it's getting late. Um, so I'm Caroline Hayashi, President of Waikiki Community Center. And I want to acknowledge that we have two board members here as well. One that you very, you know very well and love is Rick Eggert. He's actually on our board. And then Susan Todani, who is a very long time board member and volunteer at WCC as well. Um, so I want to start off by saying that I do know how this project was listed on the agenda. However, what I'm really here to share with you is Waikiki Community Center's vision for serving the holistic needs of the community. You know, we really addressed mind, body, heart. And, um, in our 46 years of being in this community, we've really found that that is the most effective and efficient way of making a real difference. And so, um, does that vision possibly include needed housing? Yes, but it's also so much more. So that's what I want to share with you tonight. Um, I want to say that, you know, we're here and I know especially you, you board members are here on a regular basis every month at the center. But I found that people that are here for different reasons are often, they don't know a lot about who we are, what we do. So I want to just spend a little short amount of time saying that. And, you know, I had a little very short video queued, but I'm not going to show it because I know we're running out of time. So hearing the conversation earlier, I understand that, um, you know, you don't want me up here forever. So, um, I will say though, that our mission is, um, to, is to care for our kapuna, keke and community as Ohana. And I think that the concept of Ohana is something that makes Hawaii a very unique and special place. And, um, I feel a sense of community that we build is really important and very, it's, it's a rare place now that has a gathering place truly for the community, um, to come together. And so we have really, um, I want to just say that we, in that population of kapuna, keke and community, we, we've been providing vital services for more than 46 years. And, um, as, over those years, as the, our services have grown and changed along with the community's needs, because we all know that community needs don't stay static. Um, we've seen really critical needs today since the pandemic. Some of those critical needs have become more critical than ever. For example, we've seen kapuna who are in danger of losing their housing, who are experiencing food insecurity. We see families with young children really struggling to make ends meet with the high cost of living. And we see an increase in social isolation and loneliness among our community members. And so all of this, as we've seen these critical needs grow, you know, we have seen that our presence and our services are more important than ever. And I just want to say that, you know, as, as a nonprofit, um, 501Z3 that's been here solely to serve the community for 46 years, we love this community and we love being here, we love this place. And we want to be here for 46 plus more years, you know? But we also know that the buildings here are aging. And I want just a little bit of history. This place where we're standing used to be St. Augustine's Catholic School. And what you see here are these three buildings, one off of O'Hua, this one right here, and the one across from us where actually our, um, preschool is. Um, these are original buildings. And so although it has a great sense of history, they're also aging. And they're actually were built in the 40s and 50s. So they're coming close to their useful natural lives. And so that creates a situation where we're not using, able to use the property to its best and highest purpose. Um, we want to be able to, for example, give you some examples. Um, the space is not as flexible as we want it to be. So this space we're in right now, the auditorium, this is our main meeting and gathering space on the ground level. Um, if we have Neighborhood Board here, we can't have a social dinner for kapuna. We can't have Zumba class. Um, we envision a space that's flexible, where we can host multiple events. It's vibrant, multiple events and groups at the same time. Um, host groups of all different sizes from five to 100. Um, the other example of not, of not functioning as we quite want is this space lacks technology infrastructure. So I know that, you know, this, the, the board has come in and sort of jerry-rigged our, our routers and things and has special things so that people can be on Zoom and online. And we all know how key, um, infrastructure technology is to our daily lives. And working with kapuna here, especially low-income kapuna, we really see that a lot of those kapuna don't have access to technology and don't have the experience with technology that allows them to really participate in community. So we envision a real modernized space where seniors can come and network. Um, sort of a senior hub where they can network and continue to learn how to incorporate technology into their lives. Um, the other issue is we don't have elevators. So that's a simple thing, but not simple to solve. And, um, the result of that is our second floor spaces are really limited in how we can use them, um, because they're not accessible to everybody. So, um, all those things, things like that are examples of ways that we would like to improve this space, right, for community use. We really want a welcoming, comfortable, safe. We envision a vibrant community hub where everyone can come and enjoy it. And, um, in the new space, we may even have air conditioning. That would be great, wouldn't it? Um, okay, so when we're talking about holistic needs, everybody knows that there's a huge need for affordable housing for residents, particularly rental housing. Um, so this is something that, for example, we see more and more kapuna, um, as in our program, who are in imminent danger of becoming homeless. Um, every year I think, oh, this can't get any worse, but every year it does. Um, we see kapuna who has lived in their spaces for decades and decades. Their rents are suddenly going up by sometimes more than 50% or their buildings are being sold or renovated. And all that, I'm not saying is bad or, you know, I understand why it's happening, but the result is that we have more kapuna in danger of becoming homeless. And I don't think any of us want to see that. Um, so as we see all these needs becoming more and more critical and increasing, Waikiki Community Center and its board has been envisioning, how can we increase our impact in the community? How can we serve the community even better? And so in that, we have been talking to a couple of, a couple of agencies. One is DLNR, the Department of Land and Natural Resources, who are actually our current landlords, and HHFTC, Hawaii Housing and Finance Development Authority, who is the state agency in charge of oversight of affordable housing in the state. And we're in preliminary discussions with them to see if there's a way that we can work together to update and modernize this facility and to potentially have a affordable housing component on the campus. Um, I want to emphasize, as I'm telling you this, that I'm coming to you today in the very, very early preliminary stages. Um, we're really in the exploratory idea of visioning dream phase of this. Um, we don't have any definite plans. We don't have, um, we don't have architectural drawings, we don't have potential renderings, we don't have any of that. And so, um, our goal is to really to keep this board and the community in the loop from the very, very beginning. Um, we're committed to, so I'm not going to have a lot of specific answers about parking or traffic or anything like that. But what I do have is a commitment to you all that we're, um, committed to updating you as we go along to getting input and feedback from this board and from the community. And we do understand that, um, any project or potential project is, cannot be successful without community and board, um, input. And so that is what I am here to share with you, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Caroline. We really appreciate it. And we know that as this progresses, you will be back with more information for us. Right now, it's all a concept. It's.
Yes.
And, uh, we look forward to more inputs from you. And we thank you for using your building. And we're over time on your time. Greg, could you have a quick?
Very quick. Um, I would like to hopefully potentially invite you for a future program meeting. I'm the, I serve as the president of Kukoa Council, which is for our kapuna. So it'd be wonderful to have you join us. We talk about housing issues and housing security and also a lot of the things that you're doing for the community. So that's something I'll bring to the attention of the board. We just met, um, yesterday, but we're going to be.
Maybe you'll go to Kukoa Council. That would, I would, I would be happy to.
Excellent. All right. I'll chat with Greg when the meeting ends too. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. If you're not a member of the community center, look at all of the things they do. You can join. It's very cheap. And a quick question before we close. Do you like the way the table was tonight? Does this work for you?
I like it. Well, we do sit too close, but I like.
Okay, I'll, I'll add another table next month. Because unlike me who is really fat, you, you kind of fit in, but whatever.
Can we thank Rick Eggert for hanging out?
Okay, I apologize.
For being here and apologize for not getting too carried.
Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned, and please put the chairs back like they are over here. Do not stack them and help us put away the equipment.
Chair Finley, I have my head up since before Rep. Tam spoke.